Good evening. I now call to order the Revere School Committee's September 21st meeting. Please rise and salute the flag.
The flag of the United States of America, and it will public for which stands our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo.
Here.
Mr. D'Ambrosio.
Here.
Mr. Ferranti.
Here.
Mrs. Gravellisi.
Here.
Mr. Sinella.
Present.
Ms. Ty.
Here.
Mayor Arigo.
Here.
Here. We will begin this evening's meeting with public speak. Dr. Kelly, do we have any members in the public that would like to speak?
Right now, there are no members with their hand raised on the Zoom meeting.
If there is anyone that would like to speak on Zoom, please raise your hand. If there's anyone that would like to speak in real life, please step up to the podium. Seeing none, we'll move on to recognition. Dr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have three students before the school committee today who we are honoring with a superintendent's award from the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. This award has been designated for students who have demonstrated academic excellence and outstanding citizenship in their time as high school students. They've distinguished themselves in the pursuit of excellence during their whole high school career. So, we are really excited to make this presentation tonight. We have three students who we are honoring, and we asked folks from their school to give us a little information about them. So, I'm going to start with Nick Chulley, who's a student at Seacoast High School. And his principal, Dr. Mulligan, actually wrote a little bit about Nick for us. Dr. Mulligan said that Nick was overwhelmed when COVID shut us down. He'd stopped attending. But with dedication and commitment of the student success team at Seacoast, they were able to provide Nick with the supports he needed to make a successful return to school. His attendance and motivation improved dramatically. He also attended summer school and was able to recover lost credits and earn enough credits to actually be a senior this year. Nick's been able to build positive relationships with staff and accepted all of the support offered. He was able to advocate for himself, and he has shown that with resilience and commitment, anything can be accomplished. He's also one of the most respectful and kind members of the Seacoast community. Congratulations, Nick. Come on up, and I'll give you your... The next two students, both students at Revere High School, and happen to have the same guidance counselor, Mr. Kimbrough, who wrote that while this is an academic award, I'm confident that both of these students could also receive this award for their character, personalities, commitment to educational justice, and civic engagement. They are outstanding scholars, but even better people. Both of them bring me joy every time I see them. We're better off as school, a city, and a country because of them. Of Nick Gerasif, he said that Nick describes himself as a creative, inquisitive, and master of self-deprecative humor. He believes that the better question you ask, the better answers you get. A self-described geek, but in a good way. Nick is curious about the universe and inspired by the world around him. He's proud of his work with the Revere Youth in Action and his role last year in the Earned Honors Committee. So, congratulations, Nick. So, our third student, Angela Hun, is not actually here just yet. She's in athletic competition. Mom, remind me which sport she's playing.
Soccer.
Softball?
Soccer.
Oh, soccer. Soccer. So, I'm going to request that the committee wait a few minutes, and we can honor Angela when she's able to get here back from the game. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Can I just step outside to see if I can call her?
Sure. Yeah, please do. Two-minute recess?
Two-minute recess.
Yeah. So, the committee will take a two-minute recess. Break, and we're going to move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we, of course, will go back to those certificates of...oh, here we...actually, we don't need to go on. We had perfect timing. So, just before we go on to the superintendent's report, as I mentioned, we have one more student, Angela Hun, who we're really excited to present another certificate of excellence to. And I'll just reread Mr. Kimbrough's words since Angela wasn't here to see them. He said that while this is an academic award, I'm confident that both of these students could have received this award for their character, personalities, commitment to educational justice, and civic engagement. They are outstanding scholars, but even better people. Both of them bring me joy every time I see them. We're better off as a school, a city, and a country because of them. And he said that Angela describes herself as funny, intelligent, and funny, and that that's not a typo, that he said that twice. She's a two-sport athlete who leads by example. She wants to study a subject in the STEM field in college...love to hear that. And with the five AP classes she has completed, earning As in all of them, she has a good chance as any of earning a spot in the college of her choice. Angela will be studying engineering in college while she shatters gender roles every step of the way. Congratulations to Angela. You want a picture, Angela?
Yeah.
Do you want to take a picture? Congratulations. Dr. Kelly, could they have a picture together? Yes, please. They've been working here every year. I told Nicholas I'll tell you the same thing. It's a whole college. Oh, that's great.
Are I talking my name?
No, you're good.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have several items on the superintendent's report tonight. The first of them is...or the first two of them, I should say, are transportation update and a COVID update, which Dr. Galucci will be presenting. So, we'll start first with the transportation update, and I'm just going to get this connected for the folks watching on YouTube. Back to this slide. Okay. And so, as the committee is aware, we've experienced some challenges with transportation as we opened the school year, and that's not unique to Revere. That's a trend that has been experienced across the Commonwealth and across the country, actually. We've been working very hard, and I have to give a huge amount of credit to Dr. Galucci, who's taken the main lead, working with our transportation staff to end with a transportation vendor to help iron out some issues, which he will take us through now. Dr. Galucci?
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. So, as Dr. Kelly had said, we're facing the similar challenges that the Commonwealth has faced. We opened the school year with an idea in mind provided by...from information provided by our transportation director, that we thought we were going to need about 25 buses to cover the district. And from the first week of school, we quickly learned that that was not the case, that we needed probably close to 31 buses to cover all the schools and the riders at each school. When we kind of delved into why, certainly there was some ridership increase. The ELT schools' arrival and dismissal time, now aligning with the other schools' time, prevented us from having buses do a second run that they typically would have done in years previous. And the big ticket item was that traffic in the city really prevented any type of double run within a 25-minute window. So, when we entered the year, we had buses scheduled to service a middle school, drop all of the children off, circle back to an elementary school, which was getting out 25 minutes later, then drop all of those children off to complete that double run. And it was just not realistic. The buses were arriving very late at the elementary schools. Children were getting home too late. And we quickly learned that we had to really expand the amount of buses. So, we went through an early expansion, and after going through some personnel changes, we were able to kind of tackle some of the issues that existed in terms of the planned routes. We were quickly able to go from eight buses that serviced our elementary schools and realize that we really only needed four. An example I'll give was at the AC Whalen. We had a bus that was...had a very low ridership going to the St. Mary's area, and another bus with a little healthier ridership going to North River. And so, we combined those two routes, because that bus just goes right from the AC Whalen, does those few St. Mary stops, and then heads to North River without extending the time duration of children being on the bus for too long. So, we looked and really did an audit. And as Dr. Kelly said, I want to thank Denise Senna and David Patch. They have been tremendous in the past three weeks in really working through any issues that we've encountered and had a really solutions-oriented approach to any and every problem that we've tackled. All right. Next slide. So, some of the work that I'd like to highlight that we've done since the opening of school, we've overhauled our special education runs, looked at ridership on all of those runs, and we were able to free up three bus drivers for our afternoon runs to complement the 20 buses that are in our contract with Healy Bus Company. And I should also thank Healy Bus Company, because they've been tremendous as well, helping us in any way they can with the resources that they're able to come up with, which they've been challenged by this as well. In recent weeks, we've hired five bus monitors, which helps with the supervision on the buses, ensuring that the windows are down, that children are spaced and masked...spaced when possible, but certainly masked when they're riding the bus. Another great example is at the RMA, we had eight special education vans. Ms. Senna was quickly able to reduce that to six vans. And not only did she reduce it to six vans, but she was able to cut down on the duration. The company that we have partnered with was kind of new to the city, and I'm not sure that they were given kind of effective groupings. And so, Ms. Senna went through all of the students on each and every van, ensured that students that were going to the Beauchamp area were grouped together, so that we avoided scenarios where we were potentially going to Beauchamp, then having to backtrack towards Oak Island or that area of the city, or even Central River or West River. And so, in conjunction with the company, Ms. Senna was able to organize all of those runs. It ended up reducing the amount of vans, but also the duration of the ride home for our children. We were then able to take those two vans and repurpose them for the Susan B. Anthony and Revere High School, where we had a special education need. So, that was kind of done within the contract of what we had already. And I want to thank Ms. Senna for that as well. In working with David Patch, we tackled kind of the larger bus problem at the elementary school that I had referenced earlier. We were able to go from four buses to two buses at the Whalen, from two buses to one bus at Paul River, and from two buses to one bus at Lincoln. Lincoln was another scenario where the bus would exit the Lincoln, take a left down Broadway, and they had to service near BJ's in that area, near North Gate. And it was...we had another run going to North River. So, now it does those few stops on the way to North River, and that's one bus run without too many children on it that used to be two. We've also increased our late bus offerings to four days a week. So, in the past, we used to do Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. We're now doing Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. That's helped with some of the volume of students on buses. Many students like to stay for extracurricular clubs or just stay after for extra help. Now, they have that opportunity to do that on a Monday as well, where in the past, they did not. We've also changed the late bus arrival, so that it's not arriving too early, and the students' club time doesn't get cut short, or their extra help time doesn't get cut short. So, it used to arrive at the schools at 2:55, and it's now arriving around 3:10, 3:15, to really give them that time after school. All right. So, looking ahead, you may have heard about this in the news, but the National Guard offering to help support districts that are struggling with transportation. We are at the very final stages of confirming that partnership. We're actually going to be getting three 7D licensed drivers from the National Guard that are going to start as soon as Friday. We're actually getting the vans up there hopefully tomorrow afternoon. They're going to do a dry run on Thursday, and then on Friday, they're going to start transporting our children. What this will do for us, it will give us some flexibility with drivers and monitors that are currently driving vans. We also had two vans that were unoccupied. So, they'll certainly take over those vans to be able to provide further support. They will complete runs within our school district. They will require a monitor, as many 7D vans do, and they will be wearing uniforms in our vans. That's part of the agreement that they tell us upfront. We're going to make families aware, just so that's not kind of a surprise when those drivers arrive to pick up the children. We're going to continue our hiring efforts. You may have seen that I have sent out kind of the job postings that we're still looking to fill. I made an all-call a few weeks ago, and we got a good bounce from that all-call. So, I kind of waited a few weeks, and now we're asking anybody that's looking for part-time work or knows somebody that's looking for part-time work in our community to certainly pass along names to me, Denise, or David. Long-term, where we're headed, and we're hoping that this is going to be this year, right now, we're using temporary stickers that identify the students on the back of their IDs as bus students. We are purchasing scanners, so that we will embed the bus status within the barcode. And when a child approaches the bus, an administrator or the bus monitor will simply scan the code. They'll have an iPad. They'll be able to tell right away if this is a bus student that belongs on this bus. And I think what we realized from this is that the process of preparation has to be a lot more extensive and a lot more tighter, so that we go into the school year knowing what our ridership is, understanding who is taking what bus, and really giving families more information ahead of the school year, improving our times. So, right now, our bus routes kind of say when the bus starts, and then it has all of the stops, and families kind of have to estimate when that is. Like, certainly, they get in a groove after a week or two, but it'd be nice if we could give times to every single stop, or at least ballpark times. Looking at our routes, I think right now, what we've learned from this year is that we maybe had some routes that could have been consolidated had we known ridership and had we looked at kind of maps that really outlined, okay, these two routes are headed in the same direction. Is this an instance where we can have children on the bus and not have to overextend ourselves in terms of number of buses that we need for the district? I'm also working with our Director of Communication to kind of improve our bus routes document. My vision is that, like I said, we have more specific times for families, but also visuals for our families, pictures of the schools, things that really catch families' attention and allow them to access and navigate the document. I think these are all things that we are going to start now in prepping for next year, as opposed to kind of start waiting till the end of the school year and then starting to prep. I think we're getting a good handle on our transportation needs this year, and I think we're going to use that data and certainly build upon it as we learn more going through the course of this school year.
Thanks, Dr. Galucci. Before we go on to COVID, do...
Mrs. Rizzo and then Ms. Gravellisi.
I just can't thank the work that Ms. Senna, Mr. Patch, and also you, Dr. Galucci, getting this all together, making sure our students are arriving in school safely, and hopefully some parents will be more comfortable about sending their students. But not to add to your plate, is it possible at some point when we're a little more comfortable with transportation, if we can start looking into the MBTA Student Pass program again? I know there are parents that say they're high school students, or stand...go right by a bus stop to get to school. We don't have to provide them transportation in high school, but maybe some sort of MBTA Student Pass program where they do...they might go into Boston over the weekend. Many of our students have jobs in other cities, whether it's in hospitality, and they travel. And if this could help them a little, that would be great. So, if it could be looked into when there is time and room on the plate, that'd be great. Thank you.
So, and I'll just mention that right now, when we did send this information to parents, students in the middle schools and high schools can pick up a student bus pass, or a student Charlie card, I should say, at their assistant principal's office. They're available in all of the schools, and that actually allows them to have a reduced rate anytime they ride the T. It doesn't have to be during school hours. The Charlie card does require that some money be prepaid and installed on the card in order to use it. So, they would have to load some...it's almost like a little credit card, load some money on that. And so, that is a resource that's available to all students right now, even if they are riding the bus. If they live more than two miles, any student can get a student-rate Charlie card.
Mr. Ty? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Gravellisi first, and then Ms. Ty.
Yep. Okay. Go ahead, Susan.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzo. And that was actually one of my questions, was about the MBTA card. So, that's good to know that those students can pick up a Charlie card at a reduced rate. My other questions were...we did take a survey at the end of the school year about ridership, who was taking the buses from what schools. And why was that survey incorrect? Was it inaccurate? Did more students sign up that said they weren't coming? I mean, I don't understand why that we didn't know the number of students requiring buses when the school started.
Yeah. So, we had an idea. We did not get 100% response rate, and we weren't going to also just shut everyone down. So, as responses came in, we were going to honor those responses. We actually sent out a second request, very close to the opening of school. And I think that's where we saw that increased ridership aspect. I think that didn't cause the increase in buses. The double runs was the big one for the amount of buses that we needed, because basically, we had eight elementary runs reserved that we thought middle school buses were going to be able to accomplish for us. And it ended up that we did need additional buses for those elementary runs.
Okay. And you know, I'll just add to that, that I think that it was a misguided notion that we would be able to make those double runs, and we weren't aware of that being part of the plan until later in the summer. I think that's a piece of where the disconnect came from. So, knowing that the middle school kid...the elementary kids get out only 20 minutes after our secondary kids, there's really not enough time in a 20-minute window to take the...say, let's say, the high school kids on that...drive them all home, and then still get to an elementary school within 20 minutes. It's just not feasible. So, that's where we had to really reconstruct the transportation plan once we became aware of that problem.
Okay. I was just curious about that. And then, obviously, we knew about the ELT schools no longer existing. I was just wondering why that wasn't even taken into consideration, knowing that, you know, this was going to be a situation, because there were so many students that were waiting for buses. I was just wondering why nobody thought about the ELT no longer existing.
Yep. And I haven't been able to get to the bottom of the exact root of the problem, but certainly, we were aware that the ELT schools were moving down. That was considered when we were given that initial number of 25. And unfortunately, that just didn't prove to be the case when we opened up school. It was immediately evident that we needed a lot more buses.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just curious. You had mentioned that two of the vans were repurposed, but then with the Whalen, Paul River, and Lincoln, some of those buses were reduced. Where were those buses repurposed to?
Those buses...so, those were repurposed towards the middle schools. So, we initially opened up with the middle schools at 55 and 5. They're now up to 66 and 6.
Oh, okay.
And for a few weeks, we needed 667 to kind of just ensure that we got everyone home. And we're starting to whittle those down now, as we realize that we might be able to combine routes and things like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Ty?
Thank you, Mrs. Rizzo. As a lifelong resident of Beauchamp, I've been getting a lot of complaints about why Beauchamp kids are not getting bused to school. I had conversations, of course, with Dr. Kelly about it. It's very hard. It's true that they're not entitled to that bus ride, but it's very hard if you have been giving people a privilege for a long, long period of time to take it away. So, I have been talking back and forth. And then the...and in the course of chatting with people, one of the things that they have told me is that Boston kids, who have a Charlie card as well, get free...it's a free bus pass. They do not have to pay for MBTA. Now, I personally believe that the MBTA should be free for everybody, but that's not happening right now. But I don't know if there's any way we can explore. I hate to give you another joke. You're just all working so hard, and I'm sure that it's just totally exhausting. But I hope it's somewhat exhilarating because of what you're doing for us and for the kids. But if there is some way...you know, we are in, as Dr. Kelly has expressed, so particularly in any number of papers that she has written with the superintendents from the urban districts, is there something that...some guarantee that we could get for free...a ride for our kids? Because we...you know, the kid in East Boston, just, you know, not even a mile, you know, just from the Beauchamp kid, is getting a free pass to go wherever he or she is going. And our kid has to pay as well. So, if that's a possibility, that might help in some way. So if that's a possibility, that might help in some way. It's just, and of course, even though they know that they were not quote entitled to it, you just can't feel it. You just feel very disappointed that you've lost something that you had for a long period of time.
Absolutely.
So if you could do that.
Yeah, I can definitely contact the MBTA.
Mr. Semella.
Thank you, ma'am, and chairperson. You made reference on bus stops. I've noticed in the past that the drivers stop and pick up almost at every door. Are we adhering to designated bus stops and mandatory that that's where they start and stop from?
Yes.
Okay. And the other thing, through you, the superintendent, we seem to have got a crunch time before school opened with transportation. And I chaired the Transportation Committee, and I wasn't aware of anything, and neither were my members. So I would assume that with planning for next year, that it would include the Subcommittee on Transportation to at least advise and consent. School committee man, Ty, she was dealing with parents. So I'm sure that there's a lot of input that we could be giving that hopefully would make it beneficial. And at that, I disagree with the superintendent on delayed start and times. I looked at the contract numerous times, and I do not see where the teachers have to negotiate the start of school. I mean, if you work for GE and you report for work at 9:00, peer union doesn't say, no, we don't want to come in till 9:30. So I think that's something, Diane, we have to carefully look at and come to a different understand, a definite understanding that they can't dictate the time school starts. And again, that's my interpretation of it. Maybe we can have legal counsel come up with that. But I don't know anywhere where employees can dictate the start and the stop of a workday. Okay, so I believe on the Subcommittee, I believe on the stops that they're being enforced. And thank you for your effort and all that.
Very much.
Thank you.
I'll just say, Mr. Semella, that it probably is a good idea that, you know, what you just said, for the committee, both the Transportation Committee and what other other subcommittees of the school committee, should look at school start and end times. Because even going forward, if we were to differentiate those start times more, we would be able to leverage and have more buses and do a double run during the day, and that could reduce overall transportation costs. That is a, that's really a good thing for us to explore over the course of this year. And I do think that, I do think that the start time is a subject of mandatory bargaining, just because it would be a change in working conditions. If I give it extreme-
Excuse me, just, how is that changing? How is it, they're working. They come to work when we say to come to work.
It might seem like a minor alteration to move somebody's start of their day by half an hour or an hour. But I, but it is, and we can confirm this with legal counsel, but it is a change in working conditions. And it doesn't mean that it's impossible to do, or that there would be any objection to it, but it is a matter of process that we actually discuss it.
Again, that's your interpretation. Thank you.
Anyone else have, Mr. Ferranti?
Thank you, Stacy. Richie, just one quick one. We're looking to hire additional monitors and drivers. How short are we?
I wouldn't say extremely short, but certainly, we have a healthy amount of hiring to do. I would say, in terms of monitors, we're probably still looking for seven to eight monitors. Certainly, three drivers that could take the place of the National Guard that would be, we're going to be using temporarily, and possibly even one or two beyond that.
Now, all these are part timers, right, the monitors and drivers?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? I just want to say, during the conversation, I was looking up the Boston Public Schools, and what it specifically pertains to is the M7 pass. So if that helps.
Thank you. And if I could just quickly thank one more group, because I know I thanked Denise and Dave, but our principals, assistant principals, family liaisons, and administrative assistants have just done an exceptional job of reaching out to families, confirming ridership, and really have, obviously, executed bus duty in a very challenging environment over the first few days and even weeks, and have just done a really good job in streamlining the process and supporting our Transportation Department.
Thank you, Dr. Galucci. Dr. Kelly?
Thank you, Mrs. Rizzo. So the next item on the superintendent's report is a COVID update, which Dr. Galucci is also going to deliver. But, you know, just before he gets started, I did want to share that we had an update on our student vaccine rates. We did hold the first of our two student vaccine clinics at Revere High School today, and that's been advertised widely throughout the city. We're thankful to the Department of Public Health and Lauren Buck, who coordinated that through Cambridge Public Health Alliance. But right now, we have, for our younger students, 12- to 15-year-olds, and this is city data, not just Revere Public Schools data, 77% have received their first dose, and 66% are fully vaccinated. And for our older students, 16- to 19-year-olds, 81% have received a first dose, and 70% are fully vaccinated. So that's some pretty exciting news. And the one other thing that I did want to mention before Dr. Galucci gets deeper into the testing and the pool testing and all of that, is one question that we had, that had come up around what we're doing with our HVAC systems. And you'll recall that all of our systems were working great. The three places where we decided to put in some additional higher-level filtration systems, the MERV-13 filters at the Beauchamp, Garfield, and Revere High School. I just wanted to make sure that the committee was aware. I know that Mr. Svensson mentioned this before. Those filters get replaced every three months. So they were replaced in August, and they are set to be replaced again in November. And let me share my screen again. Okay, Dr. Galucci.
All right. Okay, thank you, Dr. Kelly. So I wanted to start our COVID update by highlighting some of the resources that are available on our nice new website. First and foremost, often, we get the questions of how many positive cases are in our schools and in our district? We do have a COVID-19 dashboard that is updated daily by Jessica Gagnon, our lead nurse, which really outlines each and every positive staff or student case in each building. This is available, as I said, on our website under COVID pandemic resources. It's called the COVID-19 Dashboard. If anybody ever would like to see how many positive cases have been in our buildings in the past seven days, they're welcome to visit that. Our next two slides are our daily screening tool for families and staff, just to maintain our commitment to keeping our schools safe and not let our foot off the gas. We want to make sure that everyone is, oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. This is our COVID-19 protocol document. This is probably one of the more powerful documents that exists. It's from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It has input from Lauren Buck, our Director of the Revere Board of Health. And it really goes through any and all scenarios that might impact a family or staff member. As soon as a scenario arises, everybody has questions. It's natural. This document often answers many of the questions for scenarios that might arise, not only at school, but just in life in general. And so it's the protocols that we follow as a district to make sure that our schools are safe and sound, and that everyone is following the guidance by the Board of Health. Our next two screens are our daily screening tool that I referenced earlier. These are tools and resources where families can have kind of a quick assessment before they send their child to school, or if it's a staff member bringing themselves to school, to see if they have any of the seven symptoms of COVID-19. If they're on the fence, they're welcome to call our school nurse, who often provides guidance. And it's pretty simplistic. This is a visual representation of the seven symptoms. We also sent out a text-based version of the checklist that asks families to consider the seven symptoms, and explains if you've checked yes for any of the items above, please do not send your student to school today. Again, that's just kind of another layer of protection in addition to vaccination status that really helps keep our schools safe.
Is that the text-based version now?
That is, correct.
Okay. I'm just going to make it a little bit bigger so people can see it.
So our pool testing and test-to-stay program. So we've tested, we've pool-tested staff and students for the past three weeks, including yesterday. Some of that data is not included here, because we just got it prior to the meeting. The first week was a bit of a pilot. Consent forms were still coming in, so it wasn't as robust as the last two weeks. But even still, over the first two weeks, we conducted 704 pool tests in our schools. And those pool tests had 4,566 individuals. In those first two weeks, we identified six positive asymptomatic individuals. We had four more with yesterday's tests. Bring in our total of individuals identified to 10. Each time there's a positive pool, as you know, just as a reminder, those five to six staff members or students, whoever is in that pool, are individually tested via the Binex Rapid Test. Almost nearly every time, we're able to identify which of the students or staff are negative in that pool, and which is the one member or two members that might be positive. Once we identify the positive individual, we bring the family in. The nurse provides support and guidance, and certainly connects with the family to be sure that the child is okay and that they have the proper support and care. Right now, we have 45% of our students that are currently participating in our pool testing program, but I should, I should state that we're still gathering consents. That does not mean that 55% said no. We still have a number of outstanding consents that we're tracking down, and hopefully, the answer to those is yes. Our test-to-stay program is the new wrinkle for this year. And I obviously have to start by thanking our nurses and our health aides. Their, their job in some ways has become even more complex from last year. But the test-to-stay program has been so great and has allowed us to keep children in school that are probably negative, and we use the Binex Rapid Test to make sure of that. So these are for students and staff that have been established as a close contact. It requires a 15-minute Binex Rapid Test over the course of seven days, which ends up being five school days. It's conducted in the morning at the school via the nurse and the health aide. And as I said, the child only stays in school if that Rapid Test comes back negative. Someone who has a household member that is positive is not eligible for test-to-stay. It's just too close of a proximity to take that risk. And this was a big improvement from last year. So last year, if a student was determined to be a close contact and never became positive, they may have missed seven, eight days of school. Whereas this year, they can continue with their schooling with a simple test with the nurse or health aide each morning for 15 minutes. And as I said, I want to thank our nurses, our health aides, our administrators, and really, all of our staff. Our teachers execute the pool testing every Monday flawlessly, first block of the day. It's really a total team and building effort, and I can't be more proud. I think a testament to the work that we've done is that some of the private testing vendors have communicated with me and asked me to touch base with leaders from other school districts to see how we got this off the ground, and see how we've been able to effectively maintain it. I think it's a testament to all of our staff's work, because it truly is, it could not be done without a total team effort.
Thank you, Dr. Galucci. Any members have any questions or comments? Seeing none.
My only comment is-
Ms. Ty.
It really makes me so proud to see what a good job we've been doing. I mean, under the most difficult of circumstances. That's always what's been great about Revere. Everybody gets together, pitches in, and attacks whatever the problem is. So thank you, Dr. Galucci. Thank you, Dr. Kelly, Mr. Mayor, all the Board of Health, everyone who has done all they can to keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ty. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll continue on with the superintendent's report. Dr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These last three items on the superintendent's report are relatively quick, just some quick updates. The first is, as part of our SR3 grant, and that's part of the American Recovery Act, we are required to gather input from stakeholders in how we should spend that money. So we did develop a survey. We actually used language directly from the grant itself to identify different categories, and we'll be launching that survey in four languages tomorrow. And I can show you just quickly the English version of that. But it will be available on our website, and we will send an email to parents and others so that they can fill this out in the, in the coming week. The survey will be open for a week. And I did email a copy of this to the school committee just shortly before the meeting started. I'm sure you haven't had time to look at it yet. But it starts with just some introductory information that just explains why we are doing this survey and where this money is coming from. We identified that, as a district, we did receive $19,477,086. And I shouldn't say that we received it. I should say, this is the grant that we are going to apply for. And this is the same number that the school committee saw earlier this summer through the budget process. So none of that is different. It's just a preliminary step in applying for the grant, is that we collect information, and these are the specific stakeholder groups that they ask us to engage with. So we're going to ask everybody to identify which of these areas they feel they belong to. And then, a little bit of more information about the grant itself and how the money can be spent. And then we just have each of the areas where we're required to identify our program. So the first is under core instruction. And one thing that we did here was, we tried to identify for people the areas that we are already working on, and what we're doing in those areas. So where you see an asterisk, it's something that we are, we're hoping to already get started with. And one of them is, as you know, we've talked for a while about an early learning center for preschool students. That's one of the areas in the grant, where the grant language actually says, increase access to full-day early childhood programming for students. So we're just making the link with more user-friendly language, and folks can identify that as one of their priorities or not. The second one is purchase and/or expand the use of high-quality-aligned instructional materials. As you know, we started a new implementation of elementary math, elementary literacy, middle school science, and middle and high school civics this year. So we would, we would like to spend some of this money continuing that work. I won't read through all of them. There are really just six questions here. The first one, again, is what groups do you belong to? That was the second one. The third one is, how do you want us to target student supports? And there are a number of different examples here that we can choose from. The fourth one is, how should we fund talent development and staffing? And again, there are specific categories that the state requires us to connect our work to, and those are described in the pieces that are identified here. The fifth one is conditions for student success, including social, emotional, mental health supports. And then the last question we ask, number six, is what else would you like to see funded? So people could put in their own responses. And as I mentioned, we'll be gathering that data over the next week and use that to help guide our priority- and use that to help guide our priorities, which we'll share with the committee. Once we have that identified, we have to apply to the state, and then we have 30 days to create our plan, which has to be posted on the school website. So we'll be coming back. This application is due October 4th, and then we'll be back to the committee with more information, survey results, and hopefully have your input to finalize a plan that we can post.
Any members have any questions or comments?
The next item is just a quick update on the Revere High School Building Project. We are progressing in our work with the owner's project manager and the design team to look at different options primarily on three sites, one being the existing high school site, one being the Wonderland empty dog track site, and the other one being the Revere Housing Authority. And I know that the mayor and some folks from the OPM's team have met a couple of times now with the Board of the Housing Authority. Everything is really still, you know, works in progress, but our next meeting is tomorrow night, and those are open meetings. The information is posted on the school, on the Revere Public Schools website, and I'm just going to take us there very quickly.
Just a correction, that's Thursday evening.
Oh, right, tomorrow's only Wednesday. Thank you.
What time is that?
At 5:30 PM on Thursday.
That's right. See, that was my wishful thinking that tomorrow was Thursday. All right, let me see here if I can share again. All right. So this is the main page of the Revere Public Schools website, and I'm just going to scroll down to show folks, just underneath the main picture on the right-hand block here, it says, "Revere High School Building Project." If you click that link, you come to the, the school construction project website, and there's a lot of different information on this page, included our agendas and minutes and reports from the committee meetings. So I'm going to click that. And for example, here is the agenda for Thursday's meeting. I don't know if this is still going to let me... Oh, no, good, it worked. And it has the link to join the meeting if anybody would want to do that. But I just wanted to show also for folks at home. Sorry, I'm trying to get back to our webpage, and I don't know why it's not coming back up. How do I get from here, Brian?
It's a tab, it's a tab in there.
Oh, but of course I can't see it because the spinner is, yeah? Uh-huh, okay. There we go. Thank you. So going back to our website, you can also look here to see, if you go onto community forums, there are links to the past community meetings that we've had. These are also posted on the school committee's webpage. But just if people wanted to get more information and understand more about what conversations have been had in regard to the school building committee meeting, you can go here and find videos of the meetings that we've had and find other information. And I just encourage anybody who's interesting, interested in the school building project to spend some time on the website. And that leads us to my last update, which is on the Lincoln Air Conditioning Project. And there is no news that's different from what principal, whom is shared with principals at means of teacher night. We're still expecting right now the delivery of that one part that we're waiting on that's currently scheduled for delivery on September 27. With that said, I would not hold my breath. It's been delayed three times. Carl is expecting an update tomorrow morning in a meeting that he has at 10:00 AM. So unfortunately, we don't have that information for tonight, but I think we've moved through the, are pretty far through the shoulder season of when we might expect to have some of those significantly hot days. And so hopefully, at this point, it's something that we're moving into the winter season and we can, or into the fall season, and then we'll have it set up for the spring.
Members have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Motion to accept the consent calendar is...
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Di Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellis?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes.
We'll move on to the report of subcommittees. The Policy Subcommittee, Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes, just like I had said previous at the Committee of the Whole meeting, our school committee secretary and I received a link that will make it easier for people to look through our policy book and find any information that they are looking for. And we'll be working with Paul Amato to get that link up as fast as possible. Also, updating the school committee tab so that it is more insightful to the public on our roles and responsibilities. Information, maybe even ask a question to the group as a whole. And I just really look forward to having that communication and making it easier for our families to get the information they want. So that would be it to report from the Policy Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mrs. Rizzo. Any other Subcommittee reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to old business. Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Seeing none, we'll move on to school committee interests. Mrs. Rizzo.
Well, there was two, and I already forgot. I'm sorry. The first is, CPAC will be having a meeting this, I'm going to say Thursday. I'm looking for the information right now. I'm sorry. I apologize. I am so sorry. Oh, I found it. Da-da. It will be this Thursday, September 23rd at 6 o'clock PM. It will be live in on Zoom also. And hopefully, we can get that information out of where they can sign up in RSVP. On their site, it says, "To RSVP at CPACRevere@gmail.com/917." It's just a really important group. A lot of parents and families that get to ask questions of each other that might be in similar situations but just don't know where to go for the information. And these people work really hard with our students and families. So I hope anyone that is looking for answers really utilizes this group. It's very important. So with that, Thursday, 6:30, Revere. And the other, one other item is MIAA put out a... Dear Lord, why aren't I ready? I am so... Again, how many times can I say I'm sorry? I can't find it, and I'm not going to take up your time. But I am going to forward the information. They're putting out a... About kindness and respect on the field, and our students can enter it. And I am sending that information out to Frank Shea, our athletic director, and he can forward it to our coaches and students. And I look forward to hear what their opinions are on the kindness in team sports. And that would be it. Thank you. Sorry for taking up the time.
No worries. Don't apologize, Mrs. Rizzo. Thank you. Any other members? Okay, we'll move on to motions. Mr. Di Ambrosio.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Time for everyone's favorite part. I think we have eight or nine of these tonight, so please just bear with me. All right. A, a motion to encumber $138,990 for invoice 8797.00.02 to Perkins Eastman Architects DPC for April 2021 Professional Services. Universal Environmental Consultants invoice 8799 for $6,500, and Scan2Plan invoice 61 for $34,000 are included on invoice 8797.00.00.02. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Di Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes.
Great. On to B, a motion to approve payment of invoice 8797.00.00.02 to Perkins Eastman Architects DPC for April 2021 Professional Services. Universal Environmental Consultants invoice 8799, and Scan2Plan invoice 61 are included on invoice 8797.00.00.02. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Di Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes.
Great. On to motion C. A motion to encumber $84,420 for invoice 8797.00.00.05 to Perkins Eastman Architects DPC for July 2021 Professional Services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Di Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes.
Great. On to D, a motion to approve payment of invoice 8797.00.00.05 to Perkins Eastman Architects DPC for July 2021 Professional Services. So moved.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Di Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes.
On to E, and it is a motion to encumber $21,000 for invoice 9 to Left Field LLC for July 2021 Professional Services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Di Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes.
F is a motion to approve payment of invoice 9 to Left Field LLC for July 2021 Professional Services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Di Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes.
G is a motion to encumber $21,000 for invoice 10 to Left Field LLC for August 2021 Professional Services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Di Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes.
And finally, the last is a motion to approve payment of invoice 10 to Left Field LLC for August 2021 Professional Services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Di Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes.
Any other members? The chair will now entertain...
I mean, Mr. Mayor. I just, I meant to say during the school committee interest, we had a student that graduated 2020 who ran for a ward councilor seat, Michael Ronovich. I just want to say I'm just so proud of the work that he has done as a college student, a private business owner, and to take up running for a seat, I really commend, and I look forward to seeing what work he, what other work he does in our community. And just, you know, to have mentors like that and see our students really have that sense of community is really appreciative. So I just wanted to say kudos to him.
Thank you for mentioning that, Mrs. Rizzo. Michael interned in my office for a few years through the internship program that we have set up here at the high school, and he is a fine young man. He will, I know, go on to do some great things in, in the community, and we look forward to seeing that happen.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further business, the school committee will now adjourn. Thank you.